Please rise to the National Anthem and remain standing for a moment of silence following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence for Nancy Moynihan. Nancy Moynihan, 90, passed away peacefully at home in Abington, surrounded by her family after a long courageous battle with cancer on June 10th, 2021. She leaves behind her beloved husband of 65 years, Joe Moynihan, and their children Sue Mullen, Donna Campbell, and her husband, Robin Cable. Her beloved grandmother, grandchildren spouses Timothy and Elias Mullen, William and Sarah Mullen, Sherri and Sean Malley, Sarah Campbell and Andrew Campbell, and her brand-new cherished great-grandsons Brenda Malley and Elliot Paul Mullen, as well as loving nieces, nephews, and many great friends. Nancy moved to Abington from Arlington at the age of 14 and met her future husband Joe when he delivered the family groceries from Gates Market in Abington Center. She was a 1948 graduate of Abington High School. And also keep in mind, we found out this afternoon that the mother of our chairman Kevin DiMazzio passed away, so please keep her and Kevin's family in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Public announcements? Any public announcements, Alex?
Yes, I do. Please help support the Beaver Brook Playground rebuild and revitalize. Hashtag Rebuild BVP. Beaver Brook Playground will be removed and replaced with a state-of-the-art, development-appropriate, and accessible playground. Sponsorship opportunities will be available via memorial benches, tables, and individual playground pieces. Project is to be completed or projected completion date summer 2022. Show your town pride and help build the parkway of our new Beaver Brook Playground. Personalize a brick, four-by-eight bricks, $75; eight-by-eight bricks, $150. You can apply, all lowercase, bricksrus.com/donorsite/beverbrookplayground. Payment can also be made with credit card online or checks payable to Friends of Beaver Brook Playground and can be mailed to C/OhFriends, C/OhFriendsOfBeaverBrookPlayground, 513 Linwood Street, Abington, 02351. General donations are always welcome. Please mail general donations to Abington Bank, 6 Harrison Avenue, Abington, Mass., 02351. C/OhFriendsOfBeaverBrookPlayground. Thank you.
Mike?
Nothing today.
Alex?
First of all, as many of you know, HUG Foundation held our annual softball tournament over the weekend, and I want to thank all the residents of Abington that came out to support us. And a big thank you, as always, to the DPW. They go above and beyond every time anyone needs anything. So thank you to all the guys and girls down there at Park and Rock and DPW. And also, I know we have Board of Health members here tonight, but a Board of Health member asked me to mention that we do have a new trash company starting the first. And what's that?
Yes.
Yeah. And so if you expect some delays, I mean, expect some delays, these guys, a lot of these guys are new. So I think Marty would appreciate if you're not calling at 3:00 in the afternoon if your browser wasn't picked up. But they will get there. But on a positive note, a lot of the drivers from Republic during the strike were hired by this new company, so I think everything should go smoothly. But just give them a break, give them a little time to learn the roots. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Any public comments? Anybody from the audience want to speak on anything that's on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I'll move on to our first appointment. It's a continued hearing for a commercial garage license by Eduardo de Oliveira at Columbia Auto Collision, 761 Bedford Street. Somebody here for that?
Eduardo de Oliveira, 761 Bedford Street. Last meeting, we had to bring the plot plan for you guys. So I have the plot plans here. Can I hand them over?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
We have the 15 parts that we need there. Two on the left front, and 13 in the back line.
Now, there's more parking spots on this property, correct?
Yeah, all the other ones belong from Abington Auto Mall.
Abington Auto Mall, no offense to the rest. So that's the only place you'll be parking cars?
Will be parking, yes.
You'll be working on all the cars inside the building?
Inside the building, yes.
How many cars can you fit in the building overnight?
In the building, we can fit like eight cars there with the one in the spray booth.
So there'll be no working on the cars outside?
No, we got a plain space inside the building.
Scott, does the office need an update on the application, or is that something you can just amend?
We can check it afterwards if there's any change.
And then we'll reference the plan. Did anybody from the board have any other questions that weren't answered last time? Oh, yes. No. Anybody from the board have anything?
No questions.
Anybody from the audience have any questions? Guys have any other questions for us?
The last application that we did, we had to amend how many cars.
Yeah.
By mistake, we did 150, but the 15.
Right, and I just asked Scott, he said, "Do you take care of that on his end?" So I, yeah, I think this is, I think this is all we need.
This is all we needed.
I think we're prepared.
So I'd make a motion to approve the license.
For that, we just need to close the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Okay, meeting's closed. Make another motion.
I would make a motion to grant the new commercial garage license to Eduardo de Oliveira, DBA Columbia Auto Collision, Inc., 761 Bedford Street.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the vote to approve the minutes of June 14th, 2021. You guys have a copy in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes of June 14th, 2021.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes, June 14th?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Adam Gunn is next on our agenda to provide an update on veterans' grave inventory. Adam, floor's yours.
Thank you very much. Adam Gunn, the Veterans Agent. I'm here today to talk about the veterans that are located at Mount Vernon Cemetery. We've never had an accurate record or an account of all the veterans that are buried there. That is until one incredible Abington resident decided to step up and take action. Her name is Barbara Shepherd, and she has no idea why she's here today. I first heard from Barbara before Veterans Day last year, when she called to tell me that some of the veterans were missing flags at Mount Vernon Cemetery. So I gladly gave her some flags. It wasn't until May of this year that I realized what this amazing woman had been doing since 2018. She took in her own hands to make a spreadsheet of all the veterans when she discovered that many of them had no headstone, a broken headstone, or they were leaning over. Her father was in the 101st Airborne in World War II and brought her to the cemetery as a young child to help decorate the graves, and clearly that stayed with her. Barbara has spent thousands of hours in the last few years going through veterans' records, discharge papers, and on her hands and knees in the cemetery in hopes to preserve the honor and preserve the memory of the 879 veterans we have in Mount Vernon Cemetery. One of the reasons I think this is so important is we only know that number because of her. She created an Excel spreadsheet locating where they are, when they died, the date of birth, what war they were in, and what's missing. She spent her own money and time cleaning countless veteran graves and has been trying to teach others how to carry on this tradition honoring them the way that she has. She'll be moving to South Carolina in two months, and she just expected no recognition for any of the work she's done. Barbara, if I could have you come up here, please? Sorry, I lied to you.
So Barbara, I am a state representative, and I have a citation here for you for all your hard work that you've done. And being a granddaughter of a World War II veteran, it means so much to our family, what you did for the town and the veterans in this town and their families. So if it's okay, I'd like to read a citation. Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincere congratulations to Barbara Shepherd Martini in recognition of your selfless dedication and commitment to honoring and preserving the memory of all the veterans in the Mount Vernon Cemetery in the town of Abington. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for good, for future good fortune and continued success in all your endeavors. Given this 28th day of June 2021 at the State House of Boston, signed by Speaker Ronald Mariano and offered by your state representative Allison Sullivan. You'll be truly missed. I know South Carolina will be lucky to have you. You'll be missed here, but congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you.
By the way, there are 44 veterans that do not have any headstone, going back to the Revolutionary War. They think it's time that they were recognized.
Only Adam and I can support them.
I know where to help.
So Barbara, when you walked through the Dyer Memorial Library's doors in 2018, about 42 seconds after you came in, I thought, hot damn, we got a great person here. You asked to see the WPA mouse that we had that had all of the veterans who were in the graves up to 1918. And from there, you just took that project and ran with it, and we are so grateful to you for everything you've done to help preserve the history of Old Abington as well as Abington present day. I want to give you this, I know you're moving, but I want to give you a thing. So this is a poem that was clipped out of the newspaper in 1864 by the Reverend Amos Augustus Phelps. He was an anti-slavery advocate. Phelps family, insurance, him. And anyhow, it speaks about Mount Vernon Cemetery, so hopefully it'll be meaningful to you. And this photograph is from the 1890s, and it's the entrance to, we hope you remember us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Last but not least, Kristy Coburn, who is the commander of the American Legion here in Abington, could not be here today to her prior commitment, but she asked me to read something on her behalf. Dear Barbara, on behalf of the veterans in this community, thank you for the tremendous work you have done to be sure the military service and the lives of veterans who have been interred at Mount Vernon Cemetery will never be forgotten. You have given incredible amount of volunteer time and energy to see to it that none of Mount Vernon's veterans are overlooked due to lack of proper grave markers. As a veteran, I am humbled and blessed you took this immense project to show your love and respect for the veteran community. The families, friends, and comrades of these dearly departed veterans will now be able to find comfort, knowing their loved ones have not and will never be forgotten. And our noble dead will rest in peace. Thank you for such an incredible gift. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to carry out your incredible project forward. I'm grateful for the opportunity to continue the great work you have done to help bring this incredible project to fruition. I promise to be faithful to the work you began here and will always keep in touch with updates so you can see the progress of your work. Thank you from the bottom of my heart and the depths of my veteran soul for all of you have done here in Abington. On behalf of the entire veteran community, past, present, and future, with warm thoughts and deep gratitude, Reverend Dr. Kristy Coburn, Commander, Abington American Legion, Lewis V. Dorsey, Post 112.
I started this whole project because my husband's third great-grandfather was buried in Mount Vernon, and he was a Civil War veteran, and I didn't know where he was. And it was 22 acres, and we spent hours in that place. So I finally found out where he was. John Burnett took me there. I said to John, "I'm going to make you an offer you can't refuse." And he said, "What's that?" And I said, "You give me access to the burial records, and I will document every single person in this cemetery." So not just the veterans, 849, but there's 10,004 people buried there that I know exactly where they're at. And there are a few that are, they're there somewhere, but we spent three years, my husband and I, cleaning stones, digging up stones, literally physically digging them up, standing them up. There's a lot of disrepair. I know it's privately owned. I hope that something can be done to turn this into a Mount Auburn South. You know, Mount Vernon Cemetery in Cambridge is gorgeous. Mount Vernon could be a Mount Auburn South, and that was my goal. I couldn't get it all done in three years. I'm glad I'm moving, but I did a lot while I could, so thank you all so much.
Thank you. Up next, Representative Sullivan wants to present something. Adam Sullivan?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having me here. It's great to be back in normal settings and see faces and smiling faces, which is always a great thing. So I have quite a bit of few surprises this evening. First, I'd like to talk about our Unsung Heroine Award, and it's an award we give to women in our communities as representatives, state representatives and state senators, that we nominate people within our community. There are women that do their jobs or do something within the community that they don't do it for recognition, and they do it because they care and that they liked serving the community. So this year, I was able to nominate one of our very best own, Lindsay Wright. And I don't have her physical citation in front of me because I was actually given the opportunity to present it to her on Firefighter Sunday, but I do have the citation right here. If Lindsay can come up so I can read her citation. And in lieu of her citation... Citation, I actually have a little bit of a surprise. I have her husband Kenny coming out with a bouquet of flowers because I'm not able to physically give you a citation today. So our citation reads... Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincere congratulations to Lindsay Wright in recognition of, in its small print, so I apologize, achieving the 2021 Commonwealth Heroine Award for your dedication, leadership, and tireless advocacy on behalf of the community during the COVID-19 pandemic. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and offers and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all your endeavors. And it's dated back on June 11th, and it's signed by the speaker and myself. So congratulations. It's a well-deserved recognition on your hard work for the town of Abington and the community at large. What you did during the pandemic was remarkable, and even post the pandemic, what you continue to do. And as you can see, the firefighters are behind us because I do have a little bit more of a surprise going on tonight. And it may kill me, so thank God we're on TV. Marty Golightly, I do have a citation for you for your hard work. So many of you may know Marty or have known Marty. He has done a remarkable job here in the town. He has gone above and beyond for our communities during the pandemic, even prior to the pandemic and post-pandemic. He has worked tirelessly with all these advocates behind us, our firefighters, our community, our teachers, our teacher nurses, our chief, and our administrators, who were able to give out vaccines to not just the community of Abington, but the surrounding communities as well. And you fought hard, and I saw it and I witnessed it. So this is an honor and privilege to present this to you tonight. Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincere congratulations to Marty Golightly in recognition of your dedicated and selfish leadership to the town of Abington during the COVID-19 pandemic, which helped promote the safety and well-being of all the residents in our community. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune. One day, I'm going to get this right, and continued success in all endeavors. Given this 28th day of June 2021 at the State House of Boston, signed by Speaker Ronald Mariano and offered by your state representative Allison Sullivan. Thank you. I do really want to recognize the men and women on the fire department, our teachers and our nurses and our chief, our chief of police, Jimmy White, who couldn't be here this evening for prior obligation that he had, but our police department, our selectmen. I think the town really riled behind, rallied behind everyone to make sure we got the vaccines, and we couldn't have done it without those two right there and everyone behind them and their whole entire staff and team. So we appreciate everything you've done. Thank you. I don't know if you want to say a few words or not.
I will have, I will never turn down a new guy. Say a few words.
Thanks, Allison.
If I have been successful in this at all, and I think we have, it is only that it is a testament to the team that I was surrounded by, the fire chief, the police chief, the brave men and women of our Abington Fire Department, Justin Silva especially, the rest of the guys who helped me every day fight for vaccines and fight this pandemic and try to get through this wholly. And so I appreciate this, but if I could just extend a sincere thank you to all of you guys, to all of our team, to my Board of Health, to the Board of Selectmen, to Scott, to Sue, all of the people that have supported us. It is the team approach that made us successful in this. So thank you very much, everybody.
Well, I couldn't tell you because you wouldn't have came if I did tell you. I do have another citation here this evening, and it's for a young lady in the town of Abington who is one of the ambassadors of Project 351. And if some of you don't know, Project 351 is a combined effort across the state with a bunch of eighth graders in leadership and dedication. And one of our own has very stepped up to the plate. She has, you've probably seen her around town. She did a clothing drive for, I believe it was a marathon run, right? In response, she's helped out with different projects in Abington. And we do have Charlie here this evening. And Charlie, if you want to come up, I do have a citation for you. We actually heard her play on Firefighter Sunday. You did excellent, you and your sister. So I have a citation here. Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincere congratulations to Charlie Hernandez in recognition of your hard work, service, and leadership in your community and throughout the Commonwealth as part of Project 351. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this 28th day of June 2021 at the State House of Boston, Massachusetts, signed by Speaker Ronald Mariano and offered by your state representative Allison Sullivan. Congratulations. And I have a little bit more. A nice bouquet of flowers. A little Bernie told me that your nickname by your mom is Rose, so there's a couple of roses in there for you as well. So congratulations and thank you for all your hard work that you do for our community. She's one of the best guys, you know. She's truly a leader, and hopefully one day maybe a state representative. Right, Mom? Absolutely. She doesn't want to talk. We'll get her there. And thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it. Thank you so much for having me here tonight.
Thank you. Three very well-deserved honors. Next up on the agenda, we have an update from Abington CAM on activities and assistance in the town during the pandemic. Kevin Tocchi, you want to take the floor?
Just a quick note. Right now, we are experiencing a technical difficulty. I did try to text a few of the members to let them know that for some reason we are not on air. Not sure what the problem is. We are experiencing issues also with the live stream over at the field. So I don't know if it's heat-related, but the folks who are watching this later, we're doing our best to...
But it is being taped.
It is being taped. It is being taped right now as we speak. I want to thank the board for asking me to appear before you. I'm here to provide some insight and information about the services and support Abington CAM as an organization provided during a global pandemic that drastically changed our lives for nearly 15 months. I'll attempt to highlight some of the challenges and hurdles that our organization faced along with many successes and breakthroughs that we achieved while dealing with COVID. When Governor Charlie Baker first announced the stay-at-home advisory in mid-March of 2020, the Abington CAM staff had to immediately find virtual ways to produce content and capture municipal meetings. The studio had the ability to remote into the playback server and some of the onsite computers, but nothing at the time to conduct or coordinate meetings or produce programming. So one of the first initiatives that we tackled was testing and gaining an understanding of the various virtual platforms that were available, such as Zoom, Microsoft Teams, Skype, and even Google Meet. The ACAM studio hosted the very first COVID selectmen's meeting on March 25th. Though this was actually a hybrid meeting, one of the first of tests that we actually tested. As one of the board members was not present, he was the fifth one actually joined via Zoom. Zoom quickly became the go-to video conferencing platform for the studio to use, first for government meeting coverage, followed by informational programs like Community Chat, and later in the pandemic, a weekly update show that was called Health Department Roundtable, which is hosted by Chris Schultz. Abington CAM was able to work with many of the town's boards and committees as we implemented use of Zoom to hold regular meetings. Now, when there was a need to broadcast selectmen and school committee meetings live on cable or social media, the studio ran a test prior to any meeting to remedy any technical issues. Now, later in 2020, the studio did install servers to the playback system so live streaming could be offered on the ACAM website. Delivering the latest COVID information was another area that we concentrated our efforts. The studio utilized its many resources, like the community bulletin board, social media, and cable programs, both locally produced and shared content from other cable centers to better update and inform residents in town. The latest info from the CDC, state-elected officials, and Governor Baker's daily updates were at one point shown regularly on the local cable channels. Now, it is worth noting that 159 of Baker's press conferences were rebroadcast on Abington CAM's PEG-accessed channels. There were also regular Zoom interviews with State Representative Allison Sullivan and State Senator John Keenan, who would share the latest legislative news from the State House as it was developing. Partnerships with many of the town's organizations, committees, and departments, as well as local houses of worship, was instrumental to organizing virtual events, providing homegrown entertainment when many were confined to their homes with limited options. Discussions with religious leaders such as Reverend Dr. Kristy Coburn with the United Church of Christ, Father Trump stand with St. Bridget Parish, and Robert Manah with Abington's First Baptist Church yielded access to weekly church service. church services to share with cable viewers. Studio also worked with the Abington Summer Concert Committee to broadcast two concerts that were performed in the high school auditorium, one which was livestreamed and the second taped for playback. ACAM would go on to assist. Abington celebrates in crafting two virtual holiday programs, Pumpkin Point Virtual and the Great Gingerbread House Contest. Abington News was another organization that Abington CAM teamed up with for multiple projects. A good example of the programs that were produced are the political forums for the town election held in June of 2020 and April of this year. Abington News co-founder Rick Collins also served as a guest host of Community Chat interviewing school superintendent Peter Schaefer, of course, Scott Lambie AC, the town manager, about COVID-related issues. And one of the benefits the studio has reaped from its relationship with the school district is the student intern co-op program. Early in the pandemic, interns from the class of 2020 and 2021 were instrumental in creating memorable content, like the show Wave Wits, Abington's Got Talent, and Senioritis the Podcast. These were the first cable programs to be taped using Zoom, and eventually they were able to accumulate 40 programs that were produced during the pandemic. The high school sports have been an important tradition in this community. Despite the circumstances, Abington CAM has gone above and beyond to provide exceptional sports coverage. As we speak, we're covering the, trying to broadcast the game against Cohasset, the championship game. They're having issues with the heat out there, but please be patient. If not, we'll have the replay on as soon as possible. When sports began to return to action in the fall of 2020, spectators were not allowed to be in attendance. Our organization stepped up its coverage by not only filming the home games, but taking copies of road games and making them available on cable and YouTube in a short amount of time. When the sports season changed, the studio did offer live streaming options for volleyball, basketball, hockey, lacrosse, and football. An honorable mention to, an honorable mention regarding some of the great sports moments in Abington High School history as a source of entertainment during the first couple of months of COVID. Town moderator Sean Riley suggested that the studio should seek community input on the best sports games that have been played throughout the years and rebroadcast them as Green Wave Classics. The public responded and ACAM was able to work with Sean to create introductions for some 30 games that were promoted, scheduled, and then rebroadcast. A quick final note regarding the school district and productions, COVID-19 forced Abington CAM to find an alternative approach to producing live coverage of the last two graduations, which were held on the front lawn. Thanks to CARES Act funding through the county, the studio was able to purchase new cameras, mobile switcher, and accessories to produce this year's graduation using its own equipment. Now, I hope that some of what I've shared provides a small glimpse in what we were able to accomplish during the pandemic. It goes without saying that Abington CAM, which includes our board of directors, staff, interns, and volunteers, appreciated the opportunity to work with others throughout the tough period to provide services and support to the community we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Does anybody from the board have any questions for Mr. Tachi?
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Kevin.
Alex?
I don't have anything.
Mike Tim?
I don't want to talk to him.
All right. So Kevin, I think your presentation shows exactly why you deserve this tonight. So I'm going to read this for you. Whereas Kevin has spent nearly 20 years in the TV and radio business, whereas Kevin served as news director, reporter, and host formerly at WXBR in Brockton, whereas Kevin still hosts the award-winning radio show Monday Night Talk, I listen to it sometimes, whereas Kevin came to Abington in October 2019 after many years of women-hanson community access, whereas Kevin has brought many new shows to Abington, he has expanded on the intern program, teaching the interns how to host, excuse me, record and edit their own shows. Whereas shortly after Kevin arrived to Abington, the world was hit with a pandemic and Kevin didn't miss a beat. He established a Zoom account so that all the boards could continue to meet. He was able to provide coverage for many town events, including high school graduation, which I really appreciate it, trust me. Kevin implemented live streaming so that residents could continue to view town events during the pandemic, including high school sports, government meetings, town meetings, and Memorial Day events. Whereas the pandemic didn't stop Kevin from developing more programs for AbCAM, including Senioritis, Community Chat, The Pizza Boys, Town Manager's Corner, Bampers Woodshed, and Health Department Roundtable. Whereas Kevin has won many TV and radio awards, whereas Kevin always gives 100% and is a dedicated team player and an excellent leader. Now, therefore, we, the Abington Board of Selectmen, on behalf of the town of Abington and its residents, recognize Kevin Tachi for his tremendous contributions and service to the town of Abington during a very difficult period. Thank you, Kevin. Signed, the Board of Selectmen. So Kevin, we'd like to present you with Abington's best.
Anybody else want to give out an award tonight? I feel like the Emmys. Next up is discussion on surplus land, the auction process, Zekos Group Auctioneers. Somebody here to speak on that?
Good evening. My name is Paul Zekus. I run an auction firm out in central Massachusetts and we specialize on work for municipalities and government agencies. We've worked for a number of your surrounding municipalities and currently have the contract for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as well. Before everybody leaves, I really need a good team on this auction, so if we could just get Barbara, Lindsay, Marty, and Kevin, it's guaranteed to be a success.
We're not doing it. There's no more pandemic.
So I've been working with Sonya Hodge, your treasurer and tax possession custodian for those properties that were acquired through the non-payment of taxes, and also Scott, your town manager, for those surplus properties. And we are facilitating a live auction of those properties. Your sale is going to combine, as I indicated, some properties that were acquired by tax possession over many years by the town through a very lengthy land court process. Ultimately, that process works its way through land court and when title, rather, when judgment issues from land court in favor of the municipality, then title to that property vests in the municipality and it becomes town-owned, but it is called tax possession property because that's how it was acquired. In addition to that, you have some surplus properties that you are no longer using. Over on Bank Street, you have the Water Department building, and over on Washington Street, you have the Tree Department where the building used to be, that site as well, some other sites throughout town. The Bank Street property is the single building that we'll be selling. All of the other properties are land, and those properties range from around a quarter of an acre to about 27 acres. We do anticipate some of those parcels will be buildable for residential purposes. We also have a property over on Constitution Ave at the corner of Route 123. That property is a commercial property, so we anticipate that there may be some interest from individuals who are looking for a higher visibility location as well. The auction that we've been working collaboratively on with your town is really an effort by Sonya Hodge to ensure an open, public, professional, and most importantly, a transparent process. So it's an excellent way for your citizenry to be able to see what's going on, and it's also going to ideally achieve the goals that you're looking to achieve through generating one-time revenue, restoring the properties to the tax rolls, so they are generating revenue on an annual basis, and obviously having folks invest in some of these properties and make them a vibrant part of the community again. There are some parcels that will only be of interest to a butters. Those are smaller, kind of odd-shaped parcels, but it would be an ideal acquisition for a butters to add to their property value and their square footage. But importantly, there's some solid investment opportunities here, and it is a live public auction, and people will bid competitively and successively higher amounts until the bidder is, the winning bidder is declared and the property will be sold. And the purchase and sale agreement, what is referenced to as the memorandum of sale, will be executed at that point in time, right at the site, and those sales will stand and the individual buyers will be expected to close on those 30 days later. The auction date is Tuesday, August 10th, Tuesday, August 10th, and that's going to be at noon time at the senior center. Bitter registration will commence at 11:00 a.m., so 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, we will have bitter registration at the senior center as well. And immediately preceding the auction, earlier that morning, we'll have a walkthrough of the Bank Street property too, for those individuals that have an interest in investigating that site and making an acquisition there. They'll have the opportunity to walk through that. That will be conveyed tenant-free. So there's some good opportunities here for people that are familiar with Abington, for builders, for investors, for engineers, to look at some of these larger parcels and determine what could be done with them. It's important that folks do their due diligence and their homework in anticipation of coming to the auction well-prepared to participate. They'll be able to access information on our website, which is ZG Auctions, Z as in zebra, G as in group, Zekus Group Auctions, A-U-C-T-I-O-N-S, so zgauctions.com. You can click on the Abington banner and that will outline all of the properties that we are offering for sale. There's two different categories. One is a top-tier category of those properties that we believe to be more desirable, more interesting, and ideally more valuable. Those require a $10,000 deposit to participate. And then there's tier two, and those properties require a $5,000 deposit to participate. Those deposits must be made in certified check or bank cashier's check, no business checks, no personal checks. That's how a bidder qualifies to participate. If they are the high bidder, that deposit is used towards the purchase price. If they're unsuccessful, their deposit is immediately returned to them and they can head on their way. Those people that are the successful bidders, as I indicated, will execute the paperwork. We are working also as a team with your tax title counsel, John Finnegan. We've been in touch with him, Scott, and Sonya, and myself and John have had some conference calls. Everyone's on the same page on this. There's a couple of different notice requirements. More aggressively, the requirements are for surplus properties. The tax possessions, the requirements for notice are a little bit less challenging. So we're meeting the deadlines for those. Counsel will be doing the legal advertising. Our firm will be doing the commercial advertising, so we'll be advertising online, we'll be advertising through direct mail. Butters will be noticed, they're not, we're not obligated to notice them by law, but in this case, just as a matter of course, we'll do that, hoping to encourage them to participate as well. There'll be print media that will be used and additional direct mail. So it's kind of a collaborative process of the whole team, an aggressive marketing campaign to get people to the table, and these properties will be sold to the highest bidder that day. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? No questions?
I have one, maybe two. Are all these properties going to be, all taxes are paid, there's not going to be any surprises after they buy liens or taxes on or water bills or anything like that?
Great question. So thank you for asking that. And that's why I wanted to make the distinction between those properties that are acquired by your community through tax title and those properties that are surplus properties. When that judgment comes from land court and title does vest in your town, then all other liens and encumbrances are extinguished. So unlike a traditional lender's foreclosure sale or a bank foreclosure sale where there might be other liens, certainly there's likely back taxes that are due, so people have to do some additional legwork, here, there will not be back taxes. No back taxes due, no other liens and encumbrances will be due. So it is in fact a better way to buy.
So the town-owned property will definitely not have any, but the tax takings will be all clear also?
Yep. Those liens and encumbrances, by virtue of the judgment from land court, are extinguished. Other questions?
Isn't that why they're at a higher rate? They're at the $10,000 rather than the $5,000.
Nope. No, the deposit amounts relate to the likely uses of the prospective property, perhaps the size of that, the likelihood that they may in fact be, you know, developable. And that's where people really need to team up with their attorney or their engineer or their architect, do their homework, so they come to the auction well-prepared to participate, because there are some good investment opportunities here, and it's worthy of people's time and energy. They're not going to be subject to any unrealistic minimum bid scenarios. This is a competitive auction. It is completely transparent, and the high bidders will be declared at the time of the auction.
And is the expectation that we're going to make that tax title money back based on the auction?
The, when judgment and issues from land court, your balance zeros out. So you receive, as the town, you receive the property, and if you're owed $10,000 on a piece of property and it brings $50,000, you keep it all. If you're owed $10,000 on a piece of property and it brings $5,000, there's actually no deficiency, because when it comes out of land court, balance is zero.
So one other thing I think the residents should be aware of, just because you're buying these from the town at an auction, doesn't mean you still may have to go to planning board, zoning board, conservation, and obtain all proper building permits. So again, you know, do your due diligence on this. This isn't a free ride because you're buying it from the town and it's, you can get a building permit. You still have to file all the other applications.
Without a doubt. Any legal, state, or federal requirements are expected to be fulfilled on part of the buyers in anticipation of any prospective permitting. So you still have to follow through that very distinct process, and any buyer is subject to the rules and regulations of your community.
Scott, will we be, is this on our website already?
No, it's not on the website yet, but it will be on the website. We intend to be as aggressive as we can with marketing it, as Paul said, and I want to thank Paul and Sonya because it's been a lot of hard work and it's taken quite a bit of time to get to the point where, but it's been, you know, it's all on the planning and they planned it very well. And once we get this finalized, we will have it, like I said, on the website. We'll post it on Facebook, put it out there any way we can, and probably try and get a copy of this session specifically for some questions that people might have. I think we answered a lot of them in the presentation.
And we certainly welcome people to call our office directly, 508-842-9000, 508-842-9000. If there are local folks who have an interest in one of these properties, but they haven't customarily attended auctions, and they may not be familiar exactly with that process, we'll take their time to walk them through the process, give them the pros and cons of making an acquisition that way, and take the time really to ensure that they're comfortable with the process. And that comfort level is what's most important. The less trepidation that potential buyers have, the better off we will all be and the better served the community will be. So we really encourage people to look closely at this. These types of auctions are not customarily annual auctions. These properties are acquired over time. At some point for different municipalities, there's an auction where they try to generate this much-needed revenue for other causes in town. And Scott is 100% right when he references Sonya. It's, you know, it's one of the things when you retain a treasurer, a treasurer can occasionally be appointed and sometimes often appointed as custodian. It turns into another job, because Sonya is responsible for the care, custody, and control of those properties, the management of those properties, the sale of those properties. And that's all determining, you know, do we definitely own this property? How in fact was it acquired? Does it have clear title? What are the boundaries on that? And that's a lot of the legwork that's been done through land court and now as a follow-up to make sure all those underlying court cases were done accurately and those files are complete, so we're in good shape with respect to title and dimensional shapes and forms of those parcels. So, but if we lob the time back and forth, it would be, there'd be a lot of hours there. But I- be, there'd be a lot of hours there. But my anticipation is that this will be a good outcome, but it's dependent on the individuals out there to join with us in this opportunity. That's a unique opportunity for for your community. At a time when real estate values are high, we do have some good assets to offer. So be the be the bidder, be the winner.
Do you have a final questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You bet. Yes.
I just want to commend Sonia for her efforts. Like, I've been here for ten years, and she stepped up to do this tax title stuff that hasn't been done in the past, because we feel bad that we have to take these properties. But she has worked very hard in knowing how many years that these people have been paying their taxes, and she's not taking it lightly. It's not like, oh, just this one year, you haven't paid your taxes, and we're doing this, you know? So she she has really put a lot of hard work into this in the last four years that she's been here.
Thank you, Sonia.
I wish I had a proclamation to give.
We're all out.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next meeting, maybe. Thank you, guys. Next up is annual appointments to boards and committees. These are expiring terms. Well, selectmen appointees to boards and committees. There's quite a few, so I think we'll take them one by one here. And if anybody is in the audience who wants to speak on an appointment, feel free to raise your hand and stop me as we go if I miss something. But the first up on our list is that Abington Cultural Council is, four members, all requested reappointment, and I don't see, somebody stop me if I'm wrong on these, but I don't see any other applications that came in, just the four reappointments.
I believe that's correct.
So I'll take a motion.
Take a motion to reappoint Beth Godfrey, Elaine Nero, Carolyn Bates, and Lucy Furlong to the Abington Arts Council.
We're on Abington Cultural Council.
Is that the?
Is that the same thing?
The arts.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
It says it counts wrong one notch on the other.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Ames Noel Master Plan Advisory Committee has five people, three requested reappointment. The other appointments are from the Planning Board of Park and Rec. So our appointees that requested reappointment was Paul Bunker, Chris Schultz, and Carl DeJustburg.
Is there any other?
There was one other application sent in, Colette Roget.
Colette Roget. Is anybody here for that appointment want to speak on their appointment? Seeing nothing. I'll take a nomination.
Do we have to sort of lump all four of them together?
No, no, you can.
As a motion?
No, we have to, we have to appoint, we have to appoint three. So if you want to nominate just one, you can. If you want to make a motion to nominate two, you could, but.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to nominate Chris Schultz for Ames Noel Master Plan Advisory Committee.
Is there a second for Chris Schultz?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. So now there's two open spots.
Is there anyone else here from this committee? Just you. Have you been meeting regularly?
We haven't since COVID. I believe we have a master plan that we were supposed to present, you guys.
Tonight, yeah.
Rick's not here.
That's been taken off the agenda. Rick had requested that we not do that tonight, so we'll get that on a future meeting.
Well, I guess we have a motion and a second on the floor, so.
That was voted. Chris Schultz was voted unanimously.
Then I would make a motion for Kyle Justburg and Paul Bunker to remain on.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of reappointing Carl DeJustburg and Paul Bunker?
Aye.
Aye.
Those appointments are full. Cable Advisory, two people, all requested reappointment.
Just so the public knows, that's a three-person board, so there will still be one open position on that if someone would like to apply. If, well, at least one, depending on what his vote goes.
Anybody here from the Cable Advisory want to speak on their nomination? Okay, so we have two, Lisa Bezanson and Peter Walters.
So I'll make the motion to reappoint Lisa Bezanson and Peter Walters to the Cable Advisory Committee.
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that leaves one open position on the Cable Advisory Committee. If anybody would like to be appointed to that, you can fill out that application online or with the town manager, and we'll get that on a future agenda. Community Preservation Act, one requested reappointment.
And two others.
And two sent in applications. Forgive me if I mess up the name, but Jean Matiosis and Lynn Mullen.
Oh, wait a second. Wait, wait.
Am I on the right thing? It was Zach Conservation.
That's Conservation. Community Preservation.
Community Preservation.
Was Kathy Bailey and Amanda Zompetti applied for Community Preservation.
Oh, okay, I see. I'm sorry.
And there's one seat available, along with Sue Weaver, who was on there currently.
So Sue Weaver's on there currently, but it's expiring, and she did not reapply? Or she did?
She did reapply.
Okay, so we have three people up for one spot. Susan Weaver, Kathy Bailey, and Amanda Zompetti.
I'll make a motion to appoint Amanda Zompetti for the Community Preservation Committee.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of appointing Amanda Zompetti?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so there's two more spots.
I'll make a motion to appoint Susan Weaver to the Community Preservation Committee.
Is there a second for Susan Weaver?
Hold on, hold on. There's only one for Community Preservation. Conservation is two.
Thank you. Here, let's, does anybody want to revisit their motion, or are they okay?
I'll, I'll pull out my motion, or remove my motion.
It's already been voted, and we can.
So you're.
No, not for.
So your, your, your motion stands for Amanda.
My motion stands for Amanda. Yes, correct. Sorry, my bad.
Thank you.
Okay. So Conservation is two that have reapplied, and there are two.
According to this, I'm seeing that we have one full member and two associate members.
Two associates, yeah.
So we have three spots up. One's full, two associates, and four applicants.
Yes.
Two of them are still on there requesting reappointment. And that's.
Paul Bunker.
Paul Bunker and Joanne Demac Harding.
I would make a motion to appoint Paul Bunker and Joanne Harding to the positions they currently hold. It's not clear if they're voting members or associate.
I'll second that.
Worried about how we do that.
Well, if they stay in the existing positions, and then there's still one more associate position that we can vote after this. So Paul Bunker or Joanne, one of them right now would be a voting member, and one would be an associate, if there's only one full.
Are we sure about that, though? What if they're both associates now?
Okay, then I will make my motion to make Paul Bunker a voting member, and Joanne Harding an associate member.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
And now we need one more associate member for Conservation. And we have Jean Matiosis, Lynn Mullen.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jean Matiosis for the Conservation Commission. Is it so an associate member?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Jean Matiosis is an associate member on the Conservation Commission.
Counsel on aging.
Next up, Counsel on Aging has, now they have five members, two requested reappointment, and we didn't get responses yet from three, but they usually stay on. So my recommendation to the board, take it if you want, would be to appoint the two people that they, that did fill out the applications, and the others, should they want reappointment, can fill out the application, and we can put it on a future agenda.
I go along with that. Motion to appoint Lawrence Keough and Mary Lou Graham.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor of appointing Lawrence Keough and Mary Lou Graham?
Aye.
Unanimous. Up next is the Historical Commission, Dennis Bergen.
It's Dennis Bergen and Aaron Christian.
And Aaron Christian, and we sent, yeah. Is Dennis or Aaron want to speak on this? You think so? All right, thank you. I will take a nomination from the board.
I will make a motion to appoint Aaron Christian to the Historical Commission.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Aaron, you're good. Park and Rec. We have one opening on Park and Rec. The person on there did not want reappointment.
And Amanda, who was just appointed to Community Preservation, so I would make a motion to appoint Donna Peavy to Park and Rec.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote no. No, I'm just kidding. Got to give Donna a high time. That's unanimous. Up next is Sage. Think there's a lot of openings on that one, though.
Do we still have a Sage Committee?
Is it active, Scott? You know?
It is not active as far as I know. And.
They actually do vote on the vouchers and expenditures and stuff.
I know they did a lot of work with getting us the Green Streets program and stuff like that, or one of them.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant Strawberry Valley Golf Course.
No, no, no.
The Sage Committee, nobody applied, and we don't have any. I believe, I don't believe the Sage Committee has been active for several years now. I think they got a green community status, and really, there wasn't a lot for them to do after that. So, I mean, if you want to reactivate it at some point, Scott, we could put a, you know, request for applications in, but we don't have any, and nobody's on it right now.
Okay, so up next is Steering Committee, Study of Glennowitz Way Property. That's looking for three people. That's not an active committee yet, right?
I don't believe that there's, that that is an active committee anymore.
Okay. So so that's not an active committee, so we received just one application for it?
Far as I know, yeah, I think we just received.
Thinking, Donna, you're here. You were thinking that was part of the firefighter, right, when you applied? So you want to withdraw your name from that? It's not an active committee.
It's not the.
Unless you want to meet by yourself once a week or something.
You're now chairman.
And vice chairman.
And secretary. Don't forget to post your meetings.
Thank you. All right, so we'll skip over that. Strawberry Valley Golf Course Committee?
I'll make a motion to approve Steve Wakeland for reappointment to Strawberry Valley Golf Course Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving Steve Wakeland?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, there was one other, right? Brian Payne?
Brian Payne.
Application was sent in. All right, that was just my, I see. Veterans, Veterans Memorial Trust? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. Saying there's two and only one requested for reappointment, that, do we need to?
I think that Brian Payne application sent in, was that, that was a reappointment? Or is that a new one?
I was like, no, it was a new one.
Two, one requested reappointment, didn't get response from the other, so Brian, I would make a motion to appoint Brian Payne also.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Brian Payne's on the Strawberry.
So Brian Payne and Steve Wakeland.
Are the two. Yep, thank you for that. Veterans Memorial Trust needs two, both requested for reappointment, Christie Coburn and William Jones.
I make a motion that we reappoint Christie Coburn and William Jones to the Veterans Memorial Trust.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Now we're on our zoning board of appeals. We had two people requesting reappointment.
And two applications.
And two other applications. So requesting reappointment is Andrew Leveralt, Richard Negrelli, Richard Peterson is.
Peterson.
Peterson, and David Comerfield sent in applications for those.
I would.
Now, are these, I'm sorry, Alex, but just from my own knowledge, are these voting members or alternate members?
There are two voting and one alternate position available.
So out of these four names, we need to pick three.
I would make a motion to appoint Richard Peterson and David Comerfield as voting members of the zoning board of appeals.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. So now we have one other alternate member?
The question is, do either of these members that have already been on there want to be an alternate?
We can.
I would suggest that we put that appointment off until our next meeting, like we did on one of the other ones, and have send in applications, and if they want, then we can do it at that meeting. I don't want to appoint one of these, and they don't want the alternate, and they're not here to.
They're both voting members now?
Yes.
And their application was for reappointment, so.
So I would make a motion to put off the appointment of the alternate member of zoning board of appeals to a future meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I say no. Motion passes.
Griffin's Dairy.
Did I miss one? Griffin's Dairy, one person, Mary Ann Papasino, maybe?
Make a motion to appoint Mary Ann Papasino to the Griffin's Dairy Committee.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Guys, just want to look over that real quick. I want to make sure I didn't miss any appointments. There was kind of three different papers we were working on.
Yeah, and we have Old Colony Planning Council, too.
Yeah. That's Stephen Santasanio.
Stephen Santasanio.
Santasanio, yes. You've, you've previously appointed him for a three-year term. I think you did that last year, but I had a meeting with OCPC, and they requested that you do it on an annual basis, or reaffirm it at least annually, and then you can.
So our bylaws say it's a three-year term. Their bylaws say it's a one-year term, so.
Correct.
So just, just for their own benefit, does anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion to reappoint Stephen Santasanio to the Old Colony Planning Council.
Any, oh, second, sorry?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Additionally, on the Old Colony Planning Council, they requested that we appoint an alternate to Stephen, and they recommended and requested it be someone from the Board of Selectment. I had mentioned it to Alex Aggerty. Obviously, it's open to anybody on this board, but he did say he'd be willing to do it.
I make a motion to appoint Alex Aggerty. I make a motion to appoint Alex Aggerty.
I'll second.
I'm not running against him again, so. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anything else? Any other appointments? Anybody else want to do anything?
So, Scott, if we could get those two committees zoning, and if the other one, if we could get those updated on the website, and maybe do that in August.
Up next, John Stone, Operational Update of the DPW and Highway. It's kind of redundant, isn't DPW part of, Highway part of DPW?
Oh, look at, and he brought his whole staff, I gotta, we got printouts.
We thought you were kidding about the PowerPoint.
Are we paying overtime for this?
It's only 48 pages.
You were kidding about the PowerPoint.
Oh, wow, this is a-
It won't be a reference, and I'm not going to go through the whole, alright, good.
We could sit here for hours.
It'll be quick.
It'll be quick.
It'll look quick.
It'll be quick.
I'm holding you to that.
Okay, Kelly?
Drop the legs.
Well, thank you, appreciate it.
Move up here a little bit.
Move up a little bit.
There we go. So the handouts won't be a reference, I'm not going to sit down and go through the whole thing, unless you guys have questions.
No.
Oh, and keep it arrow line. Alright, this is a, this is just a general update of our activities, for those of you who don't know. Road maintenance, for this year coming up, we plan on resurfacing Lincoln Street, Hancock Street, Washington Street between 123 and 711, and Brett Street. And in general, we repair about 100 potholes a year, install 20 berms a year, striping, cut back, cleanups on the sides of the roads, signage, and patching. This is our five-year plan, it's not set in stone, but these are some of the roads we'd like to do over the next five years. It's going to change to work and document. If you guys have any input at any time, or any questions, feel free to call me, call the office. And this is, every year, we rate the roads on a scale of one to 10, and there it is for your reference in the back.
I'm sorry, John, just, Abington Camp, can you hear John? Should he be close to a microphone? There's a conference mic in front of our thing, do we want to move, I just want, I want to make sure people at home can hear, can you do it from podium? There's a-
I've got a seat. I have allergies.
I think this one here is probably-
Oops. Jeanie, hold this out. Anyway, this is, once a year, we go out and rate all our roads on a scale of zero to 10, 10 being best, obviously, I'm not going to sit there and go through every road, but there it is for your reference, and we usually do it about January, January of each year. There it is here. Thirty percent of our roads will give a grade of under five, so we need to continue to invest in our infrastructure like we did this year, we'd be able to get money to do Hancock, most of Hancock and Lincoln. So we need to continue to invest in our infrastructure. Tree removal, since 2016, when we had that accident, the terrible accident, we removed 213 hazardous, potentially hazardous trees. We still have 38 on the list that we need to do, we haven't, we haven't caught, got up to the end of the list yet, we're hoping to get there in the next two years or so. We only have about 28,000 a year to remove trees, and we don't have the, we don't have a bucket truck that goes up 25 feet, we don't have a bucket truck that's safe, number one, we don't have a bucket truck that goes up, goes past 25 feet in the air, and we don't have the manpower anyway, so we sub it up. Vehicle maintenance, Jack and Marcus are in charge of, I think there's about 122 pieces of our equipment and vehicles in town, and they're in charge of taking all, taking care of all that, oil changes, tire rotations, everything, you name it, they do it. They, they work out. And this is a list of our equipment, not only is it time to invest in our infrastructure, it's, it's time to invest in some of our equipment, we have some really old equipment, as you can see right here on the list.
So, John, if I can interrupt you right there, on the equipment, a town meeting voted for a new sweeper?
The town meeting didn't vote for a new sweeper, Scott said we might be able to, I'll let Scott speak on that.
Yeah, we're actually hoping to do that, and I'll discuss it later when we get to the management report.
So, we're getting any vehicles from the town meeting?
No.
Nothing, okay.
No vehicles. The only thing we got were paving up roads.
And Scott, capital planning is working on-
Yep, we're going to discuss that later.
Yeah, that's a great idea on Scott's part, going outside to establish a capital plan for the town, a non-biased look at what the towns needs, I think it's a great idea. But here's our equipment, as you can see, it's very old, and it's time to upgrade. These are some of the fields and properties we take care of, they're all listed there. I just want to say congratulations to Steve Paraxalos and his baseball team on winning South Sectionals today, just, I just came across Twitter, over on. But these are some of the fields we take care of, we take care of, like, every field, piece of property in town. And we're in charge of the pool, also maintaining the pool, filling it, emptying it, chloridating it, testing it, trash removal, the beach, spreading the sand, everything, you name it, we do it. Current projects, town meeting approved us, gave us funding to upgrade, rehabilitating the bridge on Central Street, it's in the design phase currently, and there's a breakdown of anticipated construction costs, and it comes under the 890,000 that we received at town meeting. It's a long process with bridges, because the state has to approve them, so it takes a while. We're hoping, we're hoping by springtime, we'll get, we'll have shovels in the ground for the Central Street Bridge. Intersection Adjustment, Hancock, Massiotv performed the road safety audit in 2014, the Board of Selectmen voted on a roundabout for the intersection, because the intersection didn't meet the, meet the warrants for a traffic signal or a four-way stop. It's a $3 million project, and we funded through the state's TIP project. The only drawback is it's not slated to start until 20, federally, yeah, 2025, which is still four years on, so. There's a picture of the intersection, there's a picture of the roundabout in the intersection, it's going to be very similar to the one at North Quincy and Chestnut, if you haven't seen, if you've, if you've seen it, it's, it's pretty nice, it's going to be very similar. We have a lot of accidents there, I'm sure the chief can attest to that, so we think this is going to be a good project. Safety improvement for the town.
Is there a, real quick, John, on that, is there a regrading of that hill?
Yes, sir.
Still involved in that project?
Yes, sir, we're shaving it down a few feet, and we're going to actually build up the middle, so it'll make that hill less steep.
Last we had discussed, this might be a couple, we were going to talk to the neighbors about cutting, trimming those bushes back for the site from, coming from Chestnut towards North Quincy?
Yes.
Have they been doing that, or?
We couldn't get ahold of the resident, we had some personal issues at the resident, but we have since talked to him, and we're going to have to take a little bit of what he thinks is his property, for the roundabout project, and all those bushes will be gone.
Okay.
But we were able to cut back a few corners of the intersection to make it safer for now. And the Complete Streets Project, I'm sure you guys have seen it on Glennewitz Way.
Came up great.
Came up great, I did, I think I did, too, it's, this is just a rundown of, I know there's a lot of questions on Facebook about, people saying, where'd we get the money for it, and whatever, we didn't pay for anything but the design. It was a $400,000 grant, we got a $40,000 grant to create a prioritization list of projects we'd like to do, I didn't want, I was going to bring it, but we have it here, it's another like 40 pages long, I didn't want to print it out for all you guys, but we have it, if you ever want to see it. State chose this project off the prioritization list, and it just, just became completed. So I'd like to build on that in the future, going down Washington, maybe, if the, if the process is still going on, the Complete Streets process. LED streetlights, going to be converting, I'm sure you guys know, going to be converting all 825 streetlights over to LEDs, it's going to save the town over $25,000 a year, upon completion, we get a check for $54,850. We'll be able to turn on all the lights in town throughout, with this project. I think a couple, about 10 years ago, maybe, maybe a little more than 10 years ago, the town deactivated some lights as a cost-saving measure, we'll be able to turn all them back on. And the new LED lights, they last, the fixtures last 10 to 12 years, whereas the vapor lamps, we will replace them every three to five years, so we're going to save money there, too, we'll realize the savings there. And that's the breakdown, if anyone wants to look at it, you have it. Sawforce Main Project, as you may or may not know, our main, Sawforce Main runs from our office on Summer Street at the corner of Progress, all the way to Walmart, goes down Summer, takes a left on Route 18, takes a right on Vernon, takes a left on 123, and discharges in front of Walmart, it's two miles long. For the past six years, we've had two breaks, the first one is the right picture, the second one is the left picture. We have no form of redundancy, we had to call in pump trucks to take the saw out as we made the repairs, so. We did an analysis, evaluated three scenarios, the Board of Saw Commissioners come up, they voted to install a new 20-inch force man. And we're going to keep the old one in place to provide a form of redundancy in case 50, 60, 70 years from now, they need to do something with the new force man. And it will accommodate future flows, a new 20-inch, 20-inch force man will accommodate future flows. The existing force man's 30 years old, I already went through that. The break in 2015 was hydrogen sulfide building up inside the pipe, so the corrosion happened from the inside out. The recent break in 2020, the corrosion happened from the outside in, because of acetic soils, we believe. So, I went through this, I'm going to go with the PVC, 11,000 linear feet, the project is, it's supposed to break around the end of July, we're having trouble getting the PVC pipe, because of the resins, so they're hoping to start at the end of July, be done by Thanksgiving or so, and then come back and cave Summer, Vernon, 123, 18, after the French is settled. That's the plan.
So, John-
Yes, sir, here's the map.
Vernon Street now is not this project?
No.
What's going on there?
No, that, they, they, they know we're doing this, so they want to replace the gas main, so they don't have to rip up the road after the fact.
I see, okay.
And here's a map of the force man, where the two breaks happened, the first break cost us $70,000, the second break cost us $250,000, the pump trucks. And Geosa was the low bidder, and that's, there's the breakdown, we came in under, so we're happy about that. Saw flow, we don't own our own treatment plant, for those of you who don't know, 95% of our flow is sent to the city of Brockton, 5% to the town of Rockland, we entered into a new intermunicipal agreement with the city of Brockton in 2015, increasing our saw allotment from, from 1 million gallons a day to one and a half, and the new agreement also created a new formula to lower our costs. And in Rockland, we're limited to 110,000 gallons a day, but bound by a strict geographical area, that's just to give you background of that. Here's where we stand at the end of May, our rolling average is 1,030,000 gallons, 1,034,270. So we have an excess of about 470,000 gallons of saw, we need it in the future, it's invaluable. And this is just, these are the reports I send up Rockton, daily, monthly, just to give you, and that's, that's the reporting, we send up Rockland, we're averaging 67,000 gallons a day, to the town of Rockland, we're allotted 110. So we're doing good there. I don't know if you guys know, but in 2019, the EPA and the DEP created a new permit structure, so now we have to meet all these certain criterias and best management practices, and here's a list of a few of them, we have to clean all catch basins twice a year, sweep every road twice a year, and then there's a bunch of other best management practices we're going to take care of, and it's going to be a problem trying to get all this done with the staff that we have right now, but we're trying. Here's our organizational chart, this is 2008, the DPW organizational chart, that's what it looked like, you had a separate park department, you had a highway department, you had a vehicle maintenance division, saw department. Here's what it looks like now. We've saved a lot of money by combining the office and combining the departments, but we'd like it to look like this, in the future, when the town has money, adding three more positions, two park and grounds, one vehicle maintenance. As the fleet keeps growing, mechanic, the amount of mechanics we have doesn't grow, and I'd like, like to create a grounds division with a grounds foreman and a laborer, so I'd like to add three positions over the course of the next few years, if possible, that would be ideal. No, we'll continue to try to get everything done, but that would be ideal. And our building, this is a typo, here, it's supposed to say it's 80-plus year old, 80-plus years old, and I just, just wanted you guys to see what the inside of that building looks like, we're going to need a new building someday, I'm not saying it's more important than anybody else's building, but it is in rough shape. So I just wanted to print that out, so you guys had a, had a look at that. And looking ahead, we applied for a grant for the Hunts Pond Dam in March of 2021, need some upgrades, Center Ave Bridge, that's an actual picture of underneath the bridge, apply for a grant for $350,000 through the state's municipal small bridge program. So we haven't heard back on that yet. Intersection at Chestnut Randolph, I'd like to apply for TIP funding for that at some point. OCPC completed a road safety audit in April of 2021, it's a very dangerous intersection, I'm sure you guys are aware of that.
Yeah.
It is very dangerous, but-
So what are your plans for that?
Fill out a project need form for the state's website, and hopefully, they choose it to add it to the TIP list, like they're, like they're doing with-
When it comes up.
Yep.
The TIP program designs it, recommends it.
Yes, sir, yep, they, they choose them, and the only, the only drawback is it's, it's time, like five years, so, we're going to get started on that soon. What else? That's all I got.
Good job, John. Thank you for everything you guys do.
I want to say thank you to Jeanie and Kelly for doing most of the spreadsheet.
Yeah, thank you.
They have a great department, they're very responsive to everyone's requests, and we appreciate it.
We try.
Any other questions?
Thank you, thank you, John.
Thank you, you came up with awesome work.
Thank you, Kelly. Hit the lights on your way out? Up next, Colonial Power Group has a presentation on municipal energy aggregation.
Good to see you.
We don't, don't have a PowerPoint, we're very low-tech yet tonight, so. But my name is Bernie Lynch, and I'm here with Mark Capadona and Denise Allot of Colonial Power Group, the aggregation consultant that is working, has been working with the town of Abington for the last five-plus years, roughly. It's just by way of refreshing, it was about five years ago that the Old Colony Planning Commission- It's just by way of refreshing, it was about five years ago that the Old Colony Planning Commission sought proposals from aggregation consultants to develop aggregation programs throughout the region. And Colonial Power Group was selected by Old Colony and then subsequently selected by the town of Abington. Aggregation, for those of your viewing audience that may not be familiar with it, is essentially a program that was put in place in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the late 1990s when energy was deregulated. It allowed consumers to go out and buy energy on their own in the marketplace. But the law also provided is that communities could work together on behalf of their residents, and that's exactly what the town of Abington did. In 2016, when it approved a, a town meeting approved a, the, adopted the law that allowed the community to actually make that happen. It took some time to get it through the state Department of Public Utilities, but in 2017, November, the town began its work through the aggregation program. And during that period of time, saved the residents of Abington almost a quarter of a million dollars over the course of one year. Unfortunately, in 2018, certain charges were put in place due to the rate structure of electricity here in the Commonwealth, and no longer made sense to continue the program. At that time Colonial Power Group suggested to the town that it end the program and allow the residents to just continue utilizing the basic service option offered by the utility. The unfortunate part of all of this in the Commonwealth is that, once you get out of an aggregation program, you then have to go back to the Department of Public Utilities to get them to approve the plan once again, which the town did in 2019. After a period of approximately 18 months, the state issued its order approving the aggregation plan for Abington, allowing us to go back into the marketplace, and that's why we're here to see you tonight. You now have the approval by the Department of Public Utilities to go back into the marketplace, once the pricing is right. But in order for that to happen, obviously, we wanted to come in, speak to you, get your go-ahead and answer any questions. So we'll just continue to monitor the marketplace, and then working with Scott, come in and offer the pricing as it becomes available, when it makes sense for the town of Abington to do so.
So you're not looking for any approvals tonight, just to monitor?
Well, it's monitor, and then if the pricing comes in at a favorable rate, present those to Scott and allow him then to begin that process of going back out into the market. The unfortunate, you know, it's so much of his timing. Right now, the pricing isn't necessarily the most positive. But as time moves on, suddenly, the pricing does become positive, but you have to act within a certain amount of time to do that. So that's what we're looking for, that support tonight, to actually do that. Again, the benefits to the town are the savings that come, potential savings that could come from, you know, getting a favorable rate. The town of Abington, three years ago, four years ago, also entered into a, utilized a wind option that allowed green energy to be used here in the town, still a savings for the residents. It also provided some consumer protection for the residents to avoid some of the more predatory practices of the third-party vendors that are out there actually selling bad products to residents.
So will the residents have to opt into this again, or if they were already in it, will they automatically?
The way the program is structured here in Massachusetts, it's an opt-out program. In order to get the best possible rate for the residents, the entire load is bid out. And then, once the pricing is set, the, all of the residents are notified, all of the customers on basic service are notified of the pricing. They have then the opportunity to opt out of the program.
So they'll be, everyone that opted out before will have to opt out again?
Correct.
When we do it again, okay.
We just want to, we have the list of opt-outs. If you didn't want to re-market to them, you could certainly, we have that.
No, I would say send it to everyone, let them opt out again. I mean, they may have changed their mind at this point or whatever.
Absolutely. It's become more and more prevalent, so I think lots.
I was just curious if they had to do it again if they wanted to.
As long as that's what's decided upon, everyone that's on basic service will be re-mailed and then everyone will have to make another choice.
So are we looking for a vote, Scott?
Yeah, so we need a motion to authorize the town manager to execute.
Or not?
Or not.
That's exactly correct. Right, so this is just put the ball in his court.
Exactly.
That's exactly right. There is no, we could get there on that day without the pricing for any reason.
And Scott could just say, no, we don't have, we're not gonna do it.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's really just giving, it's really just providing the town with the tool to actually take action.
So if the opportunity comes up, Scott's authorized to accept it?
I'll make that motion then.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Scott. It's on you. Don't mess it up.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Scott.
Nice to see you again, thanks.
Up next, call for additional volunteers for the fire station building committee. Scott, what, the building committee right now has how many people?
I'm gonna ask John, not all, chief, not all, if you don't mind. I think you've been here long enough tonight that it'd be great if you could talk.
From, thank you.
Speak loud for the ones in the back.
Currently, right now, the fire station building committee, there are five members. They're all residents. Two of the members are Abington firefighters, who are members of the Abington Fire Department, and three are residents at large. One of those members, the non-firefighter, one of the residents at large, I believe is indicating he's going to be moving out of the town of Abington. Unfortunately, because he was a great member with a lot of experience, but we're gonna lose him, and I wish him well wherever he goes. So that's creating at least one vacancy on that. And I know that there had been discussions, do we want to begin maybe increasing that committee a little bit now that we're really beginning to ramp up into some of the studies beyond just a concept stage to actually looking to see, is this a doable project? And certainly, there's a lot of discussion at town meeting, as you recall. There's a lot of interest in the community, as there should be. This is a major project, if it goes forward, if the residents choose to do that. So it's probably time, we may want to bring some more people on board.
So it's five now, you said?
Right now, it's five, and there's one, there is going to be one vacancy.
One open, okay, so.
I think you would want to, we keep it an odd number.
Two more? Do you think two more is good? On top of, well, it would be three more.
Total three. I think it's a manageable number. We don't want it so large that, you know, we still want to be able to work on it. And there's no immediate rush on this, because the design phase we're going into now, we're picking up right where we left off, because now we have some funding, and we actually have some more access to the site somewhat. So right now, it's gonna be kind of just some test boring and like that. There's not gonna be a lot of active committee work, although that will be coming, once we really start taking a real minute look at, you know, what building we may be doing. At that point, I can see the committee really getting involved. So you do have a little bit of time on this. You can probably wait till later summer, early fall.
So we could advertise for three more positions on this?
Yeah.
Do it in August sometime.
If you vote tonight, I'll post it.
Yeah, two more positions, one's a reappointment, the reappointment we could do as soon as that person leaves. But we hope we can do it all at once if the committee's not meeting right now.
The committee really hasn't been too active. A couple, the firefighters, you know, have been, just because the, most of the work of that committee, the fire station feasibility study, that work was done. Now it's taking the work that they did, you know, basically the agreement, yeah, that committee believes that we do need a new fire station. These are some of the concepts and sites that they agreed to, but now we have to kind of study into that to see, either prove or disprove those sites, and really hone in a little bit deeper on those to move forward again. So it's kind of picking up where that committee left off. That committee could certainly stay. They're familiar with it, but, and there's gonna be more work as, for that committee to do as we progress further.
So there's one member that's leaving. Has he given his resignation? Do we know when he's leaving?
I believe he's given his intent that he'll be leaving. He's still an Abington resident. I do not have a timeframe on that. But he did give in notice of intent that he will be leaving soon, so he's trying to give us an opportunity to.
So my point is, he's okay with us advertising?
I believe so.
For another member. I don't want to advertise for three, and then he decides to.
I believe he would be.
Maybe we could just reach out to Scott just to confirm that, but I don't wanna.
And if he confirms that, then.
Advertise for three openings.
Yeah, if we advertise for three and then do it, maybe, when are we meeting again?
It'll probably be early August.
You could even do late August, chief, you said, late summer.
I think you have some time.
Yeah, we're.
So we could plan it for the second meeting in August.
So have all the applications due by August 15th? We should be safe there.
Sure, yeah.
Somebody want to put that to a motion?
Make a motion that we open up for volunteers for the fire station building committee and have those requested no later than August 15th.
I'll second that motion.
By the close of business on August 15th?
Yes, yes, let's be.
4:30.
4:30.
4:30 on August 15th.
And we will be appointing three positions, right?
All right, was that seconded?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you, chief.
It's Saturday.
Yes, now.
I guess we'll come in the office on Sunday, August 15th, to get the application.
Mr. Chairman, do you have a member of the poll?
Hi, come on up to the microphone. Sorry, we moved the conference microphone, so.
That's all right. John, APD 51, Summer Street, if you already put in an application, are you gonna have to redo it? Because I did it for the deadline before. Should I redo it, or?
Wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, we'll do it again.
Just so you have it.
Because you did.
Don't want you to miss me.
I know, but you put like Glenowith steering committee, so I'll have like one that'll say.
Yeah, it was like, they would mix together on the website. The website was confusing.
I'll have one specifics, if you don't mind.
Okay, so just redo that one.
Yeah, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait till I post it, though.
Oh, wait, I'm gonna.
Okay, number 10 was scratched off. The regional advisory committee update, they couldn't meet with us tonight, so we'll put that on the future agenda. Up next is the town manager report.
Okay, so as we had mentioned earlier, we're gonna have a meeting with the capital planning committee pretty soon. I think we're gonna post it for Thursday. So our first round of OPER, American Recovery Plan Act money did come in. The town received 800,000, so? Little over $800,000. We have guidance finally from DLS on how we go about calculating lost revenue. And so there's that certain dollar amount, when we figure it out and lock it in, that we'll use to purchase some of the things that we need, that we didn't do at town meeting. Certainly, we'll be able to purchase the street sweeper that we need and some cruisers, but I want to meet with that capital committee first, just to make sure that they're good with that, that it fell where we wanted in the list of things to do, and then we'll talk with the finance committee, and ultimately, I'll make sure that this board signs off on it. So it, because typically, these are things that would have shown up in our, you know, in-town meeting and been voted and approved from where we're buying them and doing it in a slightly different way, because we, of the way we got the funds, you know, we'll still make sure that everybody has a chance to speak to it. We met with a company with, from Kearney. They came to talk to us about capping the old landfill. This would be a project that we would put out to bid. Conceptually, what it is, developers who have projects in the city, who have large amounts of fill that they need to dispose of, they would work with us, work with Mass DEP, and do, you know, and perform what has to be done to cap the fill. It's something that, you know, this landfill was supposed to be capped, I think, at some point. Most are required, and I think that, you know, we just haven't done it. Most towns are, you know, waiting until they absolutely have to do it. This would, if we go forward with it, it would all be done and permitted through Mass DEP. It would be oversight by Mass DEP. There would be third-party inspections, the monitor, anything that comes into town, any of the fill that's used, and make sure that we do it according to the plans. It would be zero cost to the town. The developers of these properties need to get rid of this stuff, so the benefit to us is that we would take it. It would all be clean. It would all have to meet standards. At the end of the project, we would be in compliance with the Mass DEP requirements, and we would also have that compost area that would still be available to us, that we would probably have an enhanced compost area, and possibly an area that could be used for some sort of recyclables that we, you know, currently may be an overload or whatever we need. That, you know, we have ways to go on that, but we just started to open up those discussions. And again, it wouldn't necessarily go just to Kearney, although they were the ones who came with DeLorenzo to sort of discuss the project and the process with us. They're aware that it would have to be a publicly bid process, because there is a benefit to the town that really does have a dollar value to it. We had a discussion with the developers on Summer Street, or the proposed developer on Zero Summer Street. They came to talk to the town about if there was any way that we could allow them or work with them to go back to their original plan, but a slightly enhanced version of that. Unfortunately, their plan would require variances in relief that we couldn't make a side deal with on them. And, you know, we had, I had members of the planning board, or a member of the planning board and a member of the zoning board and the system planner. I had the consultant, Judy Barrett, who is being paid for by Mass Housing Partnership, a consultant for the town. She was on the phone call with us too, and we tried to talk it out, and unfortunately, it doesn't seem like there's anything that we can do other than what they're proposing. And, you know, so they'll have to go through the Board of Appeals and go through the process. There was also discussion that, you know, of a possible districting it as a 40-hour zone. I think that the planning board's probably gonna look at it and discuss it. It would be something that would be carried forward by them, and in a 40-hour zone, it's more of a partnership. It's sort of, the town looks at what they would like to see, specifically in a transit-oriented district like this one. But at the end of the day, the town receives money from Mass Housing Partnership, but from the state, from this fund. And it's a significant amount of money that sort of offsets any costs that may be associated with the project as long-term costs, like school and anything like that. But again, that's just something conceptual. I don't think that, I don't know how much support it will get, but it's something that, you know, we really should at least talk about it. So like I said, I think the planning board's gonna look at it. I'll mention it. Also, to the finance committee, and if there is enough interest in it, then we could bring it to town meeting. I'm not really sure that there will be though. Sue and I met with the Old Colony Planning Council last week. It was sort of a, you know, an introductory meeting, I guess, for the new director. I think she's new, right? And they wanted to discuss with us what our, you know, our thoughts and ideas and our projects and sort of some of the things that we're worried about in the future. And we discussed Summer Street and those intersections, the feeder streets off of it, Abington Center over there, and all of the issues that we've had and concerns. And they certainly said that they would, you know, help us with that and with our housing issues and stuff like that, so. It was a great meeting. They've been very helpful, as you know, all the way. Every time we've had any issues, they've been a great partner all along, so I'm looking forward to working with them some more. So, you know, we're mostly focused on the year-end closeout stuff. And also looking forward to starting some of the new projects, like the library, the library roof project. Town hall, we have engineering coming in to sort of do a look around at this building, just to check the roof, check the windows, check, you know, we had discussed possibly having to do some upgrades to these things. So they're going to come in and give us a, you know, a survey of the whole building and what's going on with it. As you can see, we're working on the land and building auction. One thing that the, you mentioned one of the buildings that we're auctioning off is the Bank Street building. We do expect that one to be a, probably one of the better properties there. I think that'll create a little bit of interest. It is a, you know, an existing building, and, you know, and obviously has some rebuilding or tear-down and rebuild potential. That being said, we're housing some archives there, so we're gonna be doing some shifting around here at town hall to try and make some room for all of those documents. I think we may bring some of them over to one of the other. we may bring some of them over to one of the other buildings, maybe over to the school for a temporary spot, but they are, you know, these, you know, they shouldn't be in that building, they should be in a conditioned space where some of these documents are very old, and they should be taken care of, so we're gonna be working on that. John, Chief Nutall and I did have our initial conference call, or actually, our initial hearing with the court today on the North Quincy Street issue, we talked with the judge about issuing the, an injunction, an emergency injunction, and we're working and moving forward with that, there is a recognition from the courts that there is some stuff there that should be taken care of right away, so we're working with our lawyers, and it is moving forward. As you said, and as we know, there is a new trash hall starting on July 1, Boston Carding will be in here, so we're looking forward to that, I think we'll, like you said, there'll probably be some bumps in the beginning, but I think, overall, I think we're gonna find some better customer service from this company. And that's it, at the last, at the end of the day, I did get some correspondence from the Kearneys on their ninety-eight complaint with Adams Street, however, it was at the end of the day, and it had, you know, we'd probably put it on our next agenda, though, to review what we saw.
I think we all got that.
Yeah, actually, it was sent to everybody, so we will put it on the next agenda. And that's it, unless you have any questions.
Questions?
No question.
So when are we planning to meet again? Are we gonna...
I'll talk with Kevin, I don't believe you have to meet until, so the, I guess, I probably should have mentioned this, the police chief search committee, we've been working diligently, and what we're trying to do is make sure that we get ourselves properly situated to get in front of this board early August, so you may end up having, like, a meeting that first week in August.
For just that, or for...
You can discuss other things, too, yeah, I don't think it has to be just that, but it may be that you have to do it earlier than later, because I want to give whoever the committee selects enough time to, you know, prepare and to negotiate.
So what's the plan to present?
I'll present to you with the finalist, and I hope to have just a finalist for you. Yeah, and if you're happy with it, that'd be great, but the charter does give you up to fourteen days, so my thought would be, it would be best just to do it at a meeting, where I'll present that to you, and then you can decide that night whether or not you agree with my decision. And at that point, you know, we'll have gone through, you know, we had a great pool of applications, there's, you know, we'll have gone through a written essay section, a verbal meeting, a verbal interview section, and then, finally, there'll be a very robust, you know, meeting at the end where they'll do an assessment.
So have you started meeting with any of them yet, the applicants?
We've started reviewing them, yeah, we've cut it down, but I don't want to really discuss.
No, I understand.
But, so, yeah, we are on track, that I do intend, so it would be that first week in August, I'd be, I do know that a lot will depend on the chair and his schedule, I think that there was some, something he had planned, whether it was the end of July, the first week in August, so I want to make sure that we can work around, making sure that the full board can be present.
So if we have anything else, we might as well do it that night, and then meet again at the end of August, if we had to.
Probably jump right back into the schedule, so you may have to meet the first and second week, and then, you know, I'll try and keep it light for you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Keep my public announcements to two minutes.
Please.
You did great tonight.
You did, we're proud of you. Let's all give a hand.
In fact, that also is a proclamation.
I just, I got a notice that Plymouth County Advisory Board is going to be meeting on Wednesday, sorry for the short notice, but it's because of the OPER, so I'm not sure what that involves, but I'll let you know after Wednesday's meeting, but you said we already got a check from that, but that...
So there's two different forms, there's the money that goes direct to the towns, which is what we got, and then there's money that's going to the county.
Yeah, and the county is gonna take it.
The county is going to deal with it the same way they dealt with the CARES Act money, so we'll be eligible to, and I think it's actually more than the eight hundred thousand, it's probably more like a million something, that would be portioned to the town of Abington, but again, that they'll, they'll monitor the filing and the requirements that go along with it.
Similar to what they did with the CARES.
Absolutely, yep.
And I just, I think I did mention to you and Sue, that I was told by Plymouth County that we can submit invoices for any money that's left over on the CARES up until December 31st, so I don't know how much is left there, I know we've gotten most of it.
I have my last one that's gonna go in within the next week or so, which is pretty much gonna wipe it out.
Good, so we did very well with that, I think.
It was very helpful, we needed it.
Okay. I have nothing else.
What do we do when we have nothing else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You just want to wrap that gap up, don't you?
I'll second it.
There was a reason we didn't get that until it's...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Whoa, that's better than Kevin did.
Congratulations, Kevin.